Call the meeting order, let's dance for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Trustee Carter.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Tate.
Here.
Trustee Zupan.
Here.
I'll entertain a motion to go into recess discussing real estate or matters. I'll entertain a motion. The move by trustee Tate, second by trustee Grant, any question? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd? And as trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. We'll recess for a few minutes. Okay, I would accept the motion to reconvene.
Second.
The move by trustee Brewer, second by trustee Grant. Madam Clerk, please call the votes.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Motion is carried. Item number four, through the minutes, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for committee meeting of January sixteenth, two thousand eighteen.
I move that we approve the minutes with one amendment, and that would be on page two, under proposed changes to board and committee meeting schedule. The bullet point under there, clerk, there's a comma in an incorrect place, and apologies, I didn't catch this earlier, I did not.
It's one comma six, and it should be one six.
Six comma. If everybody sees on page two there where I'm talking about, so it should be sixteen thousand, not one comma six thousand.
Sixteen thousand.
Right. So I move that we approve with that one correction.
There was a motion. Move by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Brewer, that the minutes for January fifteenth are approved with the necessary correction. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I will accept the motion to approve the committee meeting for February sixth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Move by trustee Grant, second by trustee Todd, any question? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Todd? Yes. Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Okay, the motion is carried. I will accept the motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting of February twenty seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion with one small correction, and apologies again to the clerk, because I had forgotten to make this minor adjustment on my comments to her earlier. On page four, at the top, very minor change, apologies more of a, with the roll call under the eyes, you have Tate, not Tates, so please add the S. That's the only change.
Any other?
That's the only change.
Okay. Any other questions? Move by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Grant, madam. With the necessary corrections, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is carried. I will accept the motion to approve the minutes for the committee meeting, March twentieth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
The move by trustee Tate, I'm sorry, Todd, second by trustee Brewer, any question? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
No.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Motion is carried. Item number five, public comments. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter of importance to business of Saw Village. Each speaker allows one opportunity to speak for three minutes, and may not initiate a debate, reply to a bubble, or personal nature. Please state your name when you come up.
Whoever's doing the shooting, whoever's doing the robbing, has the person been apprehended? Should a resident be careful and keep their children in the house? It's a public safety credit that people don't feel safe. You all say here that you don't know nothing about the crime that's going on, I beg the differ with you. A man came here last week and said, "I don't even feel safe letting my children go in my very own front yard." The grass is tall all over this village, all of these vacant homes. I personally came to the village hall and gave you all my address. Across the street, that grass is still up to the windows, nobody has cut that grass. They probably won't because I live over there, but nevertheless, I came tonight to let you know this. One minute, you have a problem with people saying names of people that's in your family and that's on your staff, but if you put my name up on the internet and say my name and put my family's name up there, I'm gonna do the same thing to yours. So if you want respect from me, you gotta give it to me to get it from me, because I'm not respecting nobody, no one that don't respect me. Whatever you do to me, that's exactly what I'm gonna do to you. So I'm letting you know tonight, again, that your people are writing up on Facebook with my name, and then to even be indicative, I should have put scriptures in the book bags, which is a direct violation of state and church and school. You know, you got some really, and I can't say what they are, but you got some horrible people working with you.
My name is Renee.
You didn't want a.
Richardson.
Okay.
Did you have something to respond to that?
I'm going to.
Okay, come on with it.
Go ahead, Ms. Richardson, go ahead.
No, I'm only here to respond.
Go ahead, I'm just, go ahead, Ms. Richardson.
I'm saying to everybody here, I am not political one way or the other, but when you put my name on a Facebook page, Joe Iswazi, I'm looking at you, okay? I want you to know this and hear it from me.
I said before, we're not gonna be personal.
But wait a minute, when you put my name on Facebook?
We're not.
You want it to be personal.
I didn't put it in your.
You didn't.
Okay, so I don't allow anybody.
Okay. Mayor, only thing I'm gonna say to you, and I'm gonna say this very nicely, because I have been controlling.
Going back and forth.
Myself, in the way that I have been. I can be ignorant, however you wanna put it, or I can be up here with you, but when you come at me, you looking for what you looking for. I'm not scared of guns, bullets, or none of it. I have used it, done it, and will do it again. I'm just telling you, I don't want nobody putting me in no mess on Facebook with none of you all. I don't know you. But if I did, I would say what I have to say to you direct, I'm saying it to you directly because you're allowing it. I don't do that. I have never disrespected nobody here in this meeting at any time, and I'm not gonna be disrespected. I can handle me. He can look me up, and he can tell you, I don't have a problem.
Now, I'm gonna say this, and I'm hopefully, I guess every week you guys come up and you think that I have that much control over any of the human.
You do. Fire him.
We're not, we're not going to go back and forth. I'm not gonna do that.
Scum of the earth.
That's what I'm talking about, that type of, that type of.
I'm not gonna disrespect him.
That type of behavior.
I'm not disrespecting me now.
And as far as those threats, you got a whole room of people that heard you say that.
You're right. You're so right. And yours.
Yes, ma'am. If you're gonna continue to do that, I will ask you to leave. Yes, ma'am.
Rose Ketchum. It's been, how long have you been in, a year and a half or better, or less, little less, little more? And I'm still waiting for the bricks. Now, Ms. Dorothy Lindsey, she bought four bricks, I bought one brick. Nobody knows where they are, when they'll be in. We either want our money in back, or then in within the month. I'll give you one more month, and then I want my money back, and so does Dorothy. Dorothy says she's gonna be in the ground before her bricks. Thank you.
In regards to your bricks, ma'am, I had a talk today, and we're gonna send those out to a agency that's going to engrave them, they'll be back hopefully within a week, and soon as we get them all back, we're gonna look for a time that we can give Public Works to actually put those in. But I was talking to someone today about that same thing.
I've been hearing this for a year, I'm sorry.
Okay, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I have. If you don't want to be part of this meeting, please leave, but I will not ask you again to please respect the people that sit here. By what you're doing is not giving, you're not respecting anybody else that's sitting here. So if you wanna continue to do that, you can do it outside. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Pat Couch. Can I approach the podium? I have something I'd like to show the trustees. Numerous times, I have stood up here and mentioned, this village's policy on dogs, vicious dogs, we have ordinances in place to handle such. We've had male men, women, attacked by this type of critter. This is a beautiful animal, but you see by the collar that this dog has on, it's not a friendly neighborhood dog. It's a dog running at large. He is known to chase people. I have the same dog on video that I brought up to you sometime back, chasing two people past my house, that they had to drop their belongings and run from this dog. This village is losing revenue because this dog has no license, no shots most likely, and back in April of oh one, there was a vicious ordinance passed. That was the original one. In two thousand and ten, the committee amended the original after your own daughter's dog had an issue and was put down. I think you recall that issue. This dog ended up being shot by the police, your dog did. In October of two thousand seventeen, an ordinance was passed, ordinance number seventeen dash zero two two. Now, I don't know what you plan to do, because we have nobody to handle the dogs. The police can't put a dog such as this in the back of a squad car, because then they have to have the whole squad fumigated, aerated, whatever they have to do, because it's not habitable for a prisoner, I believe. I may be wrong. We've had an individual who was, who is a resident of Saw Village, he was also a man that in, I'm sorry, is it Tula? Okay. He is, has a permit or a license that can handle this type of situation. They need to either be not tased, tranquilized, so that they can be handled by the police without having to put them in a squad car, but we need somebody, somewhere, to help these residents, the bail bams, the mail carriers, so that nobody is gonna get hurt. There are small children in my neighborhood, this dog was loose, running, and when it came after me and a friend of mine today, I've had enough.
Thank you so much, Ms. Couch. You were, I did not see a video that you claimed that you had, but I just saw the dog, and I'm sure the police officer saw the dog, and we're definitely gonna try to do something about having that dog is running rampant out in the village, absolutely. It doesn't mean that we have to have a dog catcher, but the dog is running rampant, the ordinance does state we have to take control of the dog. Yes, ma'am.
Judy Cast here. I think everybody that knows me knows that I have always been pro Saw Village Police Department. The things that I saw on the internet on what our police officers are dealing with in the police station made me sick. I cannot believe that you received a car meant for the police department and had customized mats put in, but never thought about giving a chair. You got a brand new chair in your office, why didn't you give the old one to the police department? There was nothing wrong with it. What they're sitting on is a disgrace, and somebody donated two chairs. And it's sad, you gave an employee who was here less than four months a raise that more than doubled her salary, but you never once thought about what those police officers are doing, what they're writing on, the trash, or what they're sitting on. It's sad, and it's disgusting, and it's unacceptable. Speaking of the raise, last week, I asked whether there was a bonding or insurance for the new interim financial director. I didn't get an answer. I'd like an answer tonight. I'd like to know if her salary raised, raised up again. I'd like to know if she's getting the same amount of money that Mohan was getting after all these years, and her with no experience. I'd like to know how you handle that. I'd like to know how you can give people raises when you have other people working in such low standard cases, and it's bad. I also would like to comment on the police cars and the vests, and what I have to say about the police department, and I will never stop. I don't care who the mayor is, I don't care who the chief is. I will fight for our police till the day I die, and you can't stop me, nor can anybody It's about time that we see that some of the things that were promised during a campaign are being done. Everybody gets mad because people are saying things, but when you don't have the audacity to even tell us what's going on, how in the hell do you expect us to comment approvingly? Money's being spent that you never brought to the board. Why? Why does it keep going that way?
Your time is up, ma'am. In regard to the car, it was never a police car, never even told that, I don't know where that came from.
Can I comment back?
No, we're not gonna go back and forth. I never said that it was a police car, never even commented that it was a police car. That was never even brought to the board that it was, I took a police car away from anybody. That was never stated, I don't know where that came from, I don't know who told you that information. As far as the chairs and the condition, what's going on, I've already talked to the chief. We've already talked, and we're gonna handle that. We was talking about doing that before, but it was important that we take care of the crime and other things that were actually going on, and we were gonna do that at a later date. So that has been talked about between me and the chief about whoever took the pictures, I have no idea, but, you know, I've seen that in this, it was like that for a minute, and we're gonna take care of that. I mean, it may not be done as fast as you like to have it done, but it will be taken care of. Do you really want to keep going back and forth, the audience, I mean, because I will ask you to leave, and that's gonna be my last time. So if we can't, you allow us to conduct the meeting and me answer questions to everybody, please leave. We're trying to conduct business. And your last question is the particular position is interim position right now, and that's why nothing has been done, but it is interim as soon as the board finds out. I'm sure the people on the board will let you know, because I'll let the board know, because the board will be void on that position. Yes, ma'am.
Barbara Sterns. My question, complaint, whatever. I'd like to know when or if something will be done about all these big tree branches, in some cases, tree trunks that are laying in the street, so cars have to dodge them. I have almost been hit three times in the last three weeks by people going around them on their side of the street and coming on my side of the street. I do a lot of driving south of Saw Trail and west of Torrance. You can drive right down Chappelle Avenue and see them out there, they've been out there for two months. There's gonna be an accident, especially with the way that these cars are driving forty and fifty miles an hour down these side streets. There's gonna be a child killed. I'm a little sensitive to it because I was in a horrific crash a couple months ago, so I'm very, I don't know, I guess I look for stuff now more than I did before, but three times, I've had cars come on my side of the street to go around these branches. You can find them on two twenty first, you can find them on Chappelle, they're on Yates, they're all over the place. My only other comment is that I think you owe a huge apology to your village clerk, to trustee Todd, and to trustee Bernice, I'm sorry, Brewer, for the way you treated them last week. You don't have to like them, you can be mad at them, but when you're sitting up there as the so-called mayor, you need to act like a grownup. You owe them an apology for the way you treated them, and you got a hell of a lot of nerve to sit there tonight and preach to these ladies about respect. I don't expect an answer, because I wouldn't believe it anyway.
Well, if that's the case, I will tell you about the branches. I did not know that they robbed there for two months. I ride around all the time, I have not seen branches that have been out there for two months, however. However, ma'am, but she said, we just got to talking about respect. However, if that's the case, they will be picked up, I'm sure today, you made that statement and you have the address, it'll be checked out now. Okay, well, it could have, we've had windstorm, so I was just out the other day, so I'm just saying, I didn't see any branches that were in those streets, I'm not saying that they're not there. I'm not saying that the streets I went down, I didn't see, but I'm not saying that it's not there, but I will look, and will, and if they're there, they will be taken care
Bernardine Hopkins. Well, I'm kinda all jumbled up here, but will, 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 will she receive additional salary for assuming Mohan's duties? That's one of my questions. And have you purchased that surety bond, or whatever you call it, regarding your treasury? Because I kinda don't see any checks and balances. The other thing, if I'm not mistaken, the treasurer is also the treasurer of the police fund? Could you, I would like for you to clarify if that's true, and if it is, are there checks and balances there? And this is kind of a comment regarding our trustee Grant creating ordinance, ordinances, although veiled, appear to infringe upon the powers of the trustees, and I don't understand why the trustees, well, more of the trustees, don't have a problem with that. Finally, I didn't check accounts payable thoroughly, but since you fired Mohan due to budget cuts, I understand, will you, well, basically, how can you justify paying Strater and Sutcliffe the money that you're paying if you gotta do budget cuts? Just, stuff is just not balancing out, it's logical. The final question is this, that eight hundred, I forget how many, one point three million that you all are going to put aside or put, I forgot the term that you used, shouldn't you be using that to make repairs, or, let's say, let's do the fire hydrants, let's cut some curbs, let's pick up some tree leaves, it's just so much stuff I can think of that we could do, rather than let it just sit someplace, so that it can be picked and possibly removed? And that ends my question.
As far as the Mohan case, I don't know where you got your information from, but that is wrong, so it was nothing about a consolidation, so as I say.
I said budget cuts.
Are you thrilled? There was nothing about, anything stated about any budget cuts or any consolidation, anything to that nature. I don't know where that came from. So, and as far as the treasurer has resigned as the police pension treasurer, so effectively no longer has that position.
Okay, as far as the trustees have a problem with the veiled ordinances, since I have to address this to you, maybe you can answer it. Can they speak?
We're not gonna go back. If you want to talk to trustee after the meeting, if you like to, ma'am, talk.
Sir, this is an open meeting, so I ask a question to the trustees who are also supposed to be representing the village. They should have a voice, sir, they should have a voice.
They do have a voice, and you can talk to.
Well, I'm asking you, can they use it? I'm asking you, can they use it?
Ma'am, are you thrilled?
No.
Okay, we.
I would like for them to answer.
Your time is up now.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you forgot one.
Ma'am, your time is up.
No, I know that, but I asked you this question and you didn't answer it. It's regarding with Sutcliffe assuming Mohan's duties, was she, is she going to receive an additional. an additional salary? That was one of the questions, sir. But I asked you that already.
As I prefaced at the beginning, I will not talk about personnel-related items in open session. The board will know everything that I'm doing.
Good evening, mayor and board. I have a lot of issues with what's going on, but I think the one I want to address today... My name? Debbie Williams, former village clerk for the Village of Sauk Village. What I'm gonna address today is open and transparency. I just happened to go on the website today, because I was looking for something, I was looking for something, and I noticed that the ordinances and the minutes have not been updated since October of 2017. The accounts payable has not been updated till October of seventeen, no, I'm sorry, 2016. The audits haven't been updated till 2016. Collector's reports haven't been updated till 2017. So I guess my questions are, who is working, operating your website, and why don't we have this vital information that for the last two administrations, people were coming up to this podium every day talking about, where's the open and transparent government? Where is this financial information, the minutes, the ordinances that we need? So my two questions again to you are, who operates your website? When will it be updated?
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. The website will be updated, and you're absolutely right, I saw that it hadn't been for a while, so I'm getting that done, hopefully by the end of this week. And as far as the different, I guess you can call it minutes, they will be, starting to be put on the website, so the website has to be updated. Right now, I'm in transition with that, so I will make sure that, and I am gonna be involved in it more, to make sure that we get those things, because you're absolutely right. I didn't see any updates on a lot of them in a while, but they are there, and the updates are available, and we will make sure that it gets out on the website like it's supposed to.
Thank you very much.
Before I go any further, I just wanted to recognize our esteemed guest, the president of the school board, Tammy Jones. I just wanted to recognize you, and also recognize the superintendent, Dr. Donald Leek is in the back. Just wanna recognize, they may not have, don't have to say that, I just wanted to recognize that he is. Thank you. And also, I'm sorry, school board member, Siné Gar. Secretary of the school board. Okay, but she still is a school board member. Yes, ma'am?
Mary Escalero. I'm here again. I see Joe Wizwadi is still here. You and your board members were given an ordinance. I'm gonna keep coming up here until he's terminated, though I know you're not gonna terminate him, because I know you were made to make that position up for him. I know you'll probably have hell to pay at home if you terminate him, but he needs to be terminated. Again, he is harassing me, he's been in my LinkedIn profile. I'm getting bogus emails at work, through my job. There are other things going on, getting emails that people are putting negative information out there about me. Again, I have to keep going to my HR department to show them all this. I also wanna say that the other day I saw a video where you talked about cancer coming into the village. But, did you realize that within less than a year that you were in, we went straight into stage four of cancer? Do you know that? You're not doing what you should be doing, and neither are your board members. Your four that Bible every time you tell them to Bible. And when the lawsuits come in, every one of them are gonna be in there, you as well, because he should have been terminated. There's an ordinance. The ordinance clearly says he should not be doing that, and you're letting him get away with it, just as your four board members are. That's my comment. Cancer, stage four.
Next item. Reports of officers. The mayor's report, I'll save mine for last, except for one thing. We will be having the Corn and Dog Roast, which will be here September 8th, from 12:00 to 5:00, right behind Village Hall. I still am looking for volunteers to help with that, to make that event possible. Yes, oh, I'm sorry, yes, there's a signing sheet in the back of the table for anyone that would like to volunteer to help make that happen. Next item, village clerk. Village engineer, Mr. Cernak.
Thank you, mayor. Regarding the 223rd Street Reconstruction Project, concrete work is almost complete. Public Works is working to repair a broken storm sewer that was discovered during the project. Public Works is also finishing water main replacements prior to paving work. Bid opening for the elevated tank riser replacement project has been scheduled for September 11th during the board meeting. And finally, we'll be surveying the I-394 Water Main Replacement Project area. Once the topography and utilities are determined, the design can progress in earnest. That concludes my report. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Question. Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Cernak, we discussed a situation with the Osland Grant, and I do believe that trustee Zupant and trustee Todd indicated that may, it may or may not be some kind of compensation for the Osland Group and the, but nobody really answered the question, so I was wondering if we finished that subject, or we're just not gonna address it, or what's going on with that compensation, because the Osland Group, I mean, grant we lost, and we'd like to know, you know, you guys got paid thirty or forty thousand dollars or something for the engineering work, so I think the question was asked, you know, were we gonna be compensated for something from Robinson Engineering?
As I stated, there will be a check issued back to the village for that project.
For the whole, thirty-five or forty thousand?
No.
But, you didn't say how much?
No, no. I don't know what the amount is, but there'll be a check issued back.
Okay, thank you, appreciate, I like that, we'll be looking forward to that. Also, a couple weeks, well, I think it was a couple months ago, we asked for copies of the booklet for the 221st Street project, and you said you was gonna provide me with that information, I haven't gotten it yet.
I'm sorry, I don't recall what that was.
Well, it's supposed to be some information about the 221st Street project, when they had the water main break, they were resurfacing the road.
223rd?
Twenty-first.
I'm sorry, I don't recall.
I'll pull it in, I'll show it to you. Okay, thank you.
Fire Department Chief Al Starbrake. I'm sorry, Finance Administration interim director, Ms. Judith Suffolk.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, I have no reports.
Fire chief?
Question. Mr. Mayor, I noticed on the Finance Administration is the title to Ms. Suffolk's job is interim director. I'd like to know who approved that position, and what does interim director mean, and what is her duties?
Intern means intern. It means she's not a full-time, has not been voted on, has not been, I need someone to fill that position, because I didn't have a person for that position. So that's what that is, and when it gets to that point, the board will know about it, they'll know everything that goes on, and it's gonna be going on, and it becomes a full-time position. But right now, it's an interim position.
So in the meantime, though, do we know how much salary she's getting? During the time, has that been approved, or temporary salary, something?
She's gonna, well, if you're interim, interim, you're gonna be getting the same salary that the person that was in that position.
When was that approved?
That's interim.
So when was that approved?
Approved, but what do you mean by approved trustee? I don't understand what you're talking about, approved. If a person is doing that position for right now, then that will be gonna pay until that position is made full-time. Or full, as far as the board votes on it. The board will vote, the board will find out everything that goes on when that happens.
Well, then I should go back and ask you a question. Who approved the position of interim director? Who? No one, so nobody's sitting...
That's not, she's not an officer, I didn't need the okay of the board to put a person in your interim position.
So we have no idea how much she's gonna get salary-wise. We don't have a new position description, and how long is this gonna be? How long is this position gonna be? How long are you gonna keep her on board?
Keep what you're talking about.
How long is this situation gonna...
I have no idea, interim. Intern means that it's gonna be interim until, until, like I stated. It's an interim position, that's a position that is sealed because lack of a person not being there.
I mean, that could be five, ten, twenty years, whatever, so, you know, you don't have, exactly, you don't have to. And for the reports, I was wondering, when are we gonna start getting the agent report, the council receivable, any fund transfer, things that normally get...
We did give it that council receivable. Agent report, everyone has, is there.
We generally get them through the email.
Generally, though, you don't, you usually ask the director for the agent report, you don't, I've never seen, every time I got one, I had to ask for it, because it changes daily.
Mr. Mayor, I usually get them to the mayor. Also, the water fund balance, where would I get that information from? I mean, all this stuff comes...
Are you asking all of this under her report? Because this is...
I'm asking, whoever we're supposed to get this stuff from every month, every paper, and we don't get this stuff everybody.
Did you come up and ask at the Village Hall? Did you come to the Village Hall and ask that? Why are you asking it now?
Wait a minute.
What's the reason for asking it now?
Mr. Mayor, like you said, we are not going back and forth. Either you have the information...
I don't have the information.
Okay, well, that's all you had to say. And I would like a copy of the agent report, any fund transfers, also the balance to the water fund, and the cash report. Now, I'll give you a little memo and ask you to...
I don't need a memo. I'm not gonna get you, I don't have the report, I don't need a memo.
So, if you don't need a memo, how are we gonna get it?
As I stated, trustee, if you need the financial reports, where do you go?
Generally, Mohan gives them to me.
Well, Mohan's not here.
Okay, so since Mohan's not here, where do I get them from?
From the interim.
Okay, so will you, the interim, Ms. Suffolk, would you mind emailing me that information through mail, please, like us normally do? I would appreciate it, thank you very much.
Fire Department Chief Al Starbrake.
Mayor and board, over the period from August the 9th through the 23rd, Fire Department responded 28 calls, three fire alarms, six vehicle accidents, five ambulance assists, three CO calls, two auto-lays out of town, one electrical, three vehicle flares, one gas leak, and one illegal burn. Mayor and trustees, we have ordered 10 sets of gear, pants, and coats to replace outdated gear. The fund came out of our clothing allowance. One additional set has been ordered, which is paid out of our FEMA grant. Last week, Tuesday, the Fire Department participated in a multi-department training with Crete Township, Steger, Peter, and University Park. They were out at the old, the old Bell moral racetrack. All the strumming departments rely on each other regularly, and we trained with them to allow the firefighters to get acquainted and learn to work together, with their tools and also with our tools. And one last thing, for the Corn and Dog Roast, if the weather permits, we might have a Yukon helicopter coming out here to visit us. And that ends my report.
Thank you.
Chief Starbrake, I have a question. During the budget hearings, you indicated, I'm not saying you, but in general, you indicated we need some airbags or something that is supposed to be, that the...
Air tanks?
Air tanks, yeah. And how many do we need?
I need 50 new boxes.
Fifteen?
Fifty.
Fifty? Okay, thank you.
Police Department Chief Robert Starbrake, I'm in, Robert, come on in.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor and trustees. For the past two weeks, police responded to 469 calls for service with nine arrests. Case of interest, on Sunday, August 19th, officers received a call of a gunshot victim 1600 block of 217th Street. The victim was shot several times and was very uncooperative. Officers could not determine where in the village the shooting took place. Victim was taken to the hospital in critical but stable condition. Our investigators recalled, and this matter is under investigation, and this evening I found out that we have a subject of interest that we are currently looking for. DEA National Prescription Drug Takeback Day. In April, we participated in DEA's 15th National Prescription Drug Takeback Day nationwide with close to 6,000 sites across the country. Together with a record-setting amount of local, state, and federal partners, DEA collected and destroyed close to 1 million pounds, nearly 475 tons of potentially dangerous expired unused and unwanted prescription drugs, making it the most successful event in DEA history. This brings the total amount of prescription drugs collected by DEA since the fall of 2010 to 9,964,714 pounds, or 4,982 tons. Our next DEA Prescription Drug Takeback Day is gonna be Saturday, October 27th, at the Police Department. More information will follow. Coffee with the Cop. Wednesday, October 3rd, is National Coffee with the Cop Day. It's a day dedicated to encourage communication and positive interaction between law enforcement agencies and the public. The day began as part of names used each year on the first Wednesday of October, furthering efforts nationwide to bridge the gap between the community and the law enforcement, local police departments. Coffee with the cop is a community policing at its core. The simple act of having a cup of coffee with the community members can be the first step in increasing trust and cooperation between the police and the people they serve, said former cops office director Ronald L. Davis. More information about this to follow. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Public Works Director Kevin Weller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several items here. Public Works has been really busy lately, we've had a lot of emergencies going on. We have some existing leaks in our town right now that we're gonna be addressing, probably midweek of next week, once we're done with all the projects at 223rd Street. Leaky B box 224th, or 21724 Peterson, 1950 to 19th Place, leaky B box, 1731 to 23rd Place, and then we have an emergency dig at 21655 Clyde. These are just B box digs, but they are leaks and active, and the residents have called them in. Staff has also been very busy on the 223rd Street improvements. Part of the work that we started to get in front of for the roadwork ended up putting us in other jobs. We had a break on 22213 Merrill, the break ended up breaking again, we had to replace 17 feet of water main. 2130 to 23rd Street, we had 15 feet of water main replaced. It broke again, we added another 10 feet of water main. 1832 to 22nd Place, water main break, just a regular repair, that one we got off kinda easy with just a clamp. Leak at 1951 to 23rd Street, this is right on the corner of Clyde and 223rd Street, this is part of the road project also. We had a leaky valve, they could not pour the curb, we dug the valve, finding out the valve top on it was rotted. We ended up replacing two valves and a fire hydrant on that corner. 2153 to 23rd Street, we had a break at that location, but that was repaired. 1835, 223rd Street, that is the last section that we just did on 223rd Street, that one is currently under repair. That one is currently under a bold order. We did 51 feet of water main over there. Um, staff is moving back, which today they're over on Cornell, finishing the last section that we began with. Um, after, before all this, all this other stuff started, they're replacing roughly 37 feet of 10-inch water main, reducing to six. They should have that done about now. Um, that ma, that road will be temporarily, uh, halfway closed down until the gravel's been put back in and it's packed down enough. So all that's been pushing us off of some of our other jobs. And I understand residents have been sending in notices about their concerns, and I'll address some of those in this, as coming up here. Uh, we've also been, during this process, we've had a few emergency, uh, air conditioner units go down at the Police Department. Uh, we've had a couple fan motors go down, a couple plumbing leaks. Those all have been addressed. They should all be working at this time. Um, we have repairs going on at our wellhouses. Um, we have a roof, we had a roof quote come out. They found several, uh, locations on the roof where the shingles or nails were poking through. Those are all being addressed under a temporary repair. Um, we will then get a repair quote for the whole roof to be replaced. Uh, emergency line, we had an emergency line. Um, we had a line go out at well three. ComEd was called. It blew out underground. We had to run our generator for eight hours. Uh, we currently have a call out to ComEd to find out about replacing that line from the, uh, service all the way to the, the pole. I'll have more information later. Um, the grass cutting in town, even with the hot weather here, it seems like the weeds are growing fast on the grass, but it looks like the whole thing is bad, so they are continuing to cut. Our part-timers are out there, um, every day. We have a good crew this year, so they're doing a really good job helping us out. And again, due to the storm branches in town, due to the, all these emergencies we've had, we have had some branches down. The residents are putting them in the roadway instead of even in the parkway. I understand they're frustrated, but there's not a lot we can do with the staff we have. We do not have any more to be able to do any more than what we have. So basically, at September's pickup, all the branches that are out now, and anybody who wants to cut or do any kind of maintenance on their yard, they can place those out, and we will be starting, um, be Tuesday, start the pickup of September. All branches have to be out by the ninth. Anything after that will not be picked up. It will be ticketed. Um, just another reminder about the debris in the roadway. If you drive around town, residents are cutting their grass into the roadway, throwing debris in the roadway. We have a lot of landscapers doing the same thing. It's the worst I've ever seen it in town with that, with the landscapers. Um, if you wanna understand why the grass is growing in the curb line, that's because people cut their grass into the street. That's why the grass grows in the curb line. There's no other reason for it. They're seeding the curb line. Also, uh, staff is doing its best. We have notices every day. We're, we have complaints. We have orders that we have to do for parts. We're doing our best to keep up with that. Um, the notices are behind, definitely. Um, we also have some concrete work that has been completed, uh, 22609 Brookwood Herb Sidewalk. There is some asphalt work that has to be completed over there. And 21700 Mark Collins Drive, there was an accident damaging the, the curb sidewalk and the detectable warning. That has been put back into place. Um, and several other jobs will be moving into the stages of quotes and to start those projects on concrete work. Um, the replacement of the customer service van, we've already gotten some general numbers on that. I'm just waiting for, uh, okay to either move forward or whatever the next step is. And the final thing, which is a big complaint for residents also, um, and notice notes that are coming in, street light complaints. We had a, uh, section of, of 23rd Street to 23rd Place, uh, roughly the 1700 block, the garden section of town. There were about nine lights out over there. We have two poles that were knocked down in that section. And the last pole that was knocked down, it damaged a wire underground. That wire's been repaired. Um, if they notice over there, the lights are on, and they will be on 24 hours a day until the poles are replaced. And we also have to replace the main contactor that turns them all on. It is currently 32 years old. So that ends my report.
Right.
Mr. Weller, trustee, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Sorry. Uh, Mr. Weller, uh, last week, we talked about the status of the security plexiglass. Uh, can you give us an update?
Remind me, what, what are we talking about?
Oh, they didn't give him a mess?
They're talking about the plexiglass at the front office, front desk.
It's supposed to be...
For the, for the, um, for the front desk.
Um, no more information at this time.
Yeah, I mean, it's been a year. Right, yeah. I mean, somebody's supposed to look unto it last week, so I guess...
Is it still, basically?
Is it still on the agenda?
Is it still on order?
Yeah, we have all the numbers. We're just, we're just waiting for some construction to be done, and then we'll move on if we have to, or if we can.
Okay, thank you.
Economic Development Director Joe Wizwata.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the gas and wash, uh, project has begun with mass excavation and foundation work that has started. Uh, R. Carlson, the general contractor, has been out reforming site survey work. That's going on now. Um, tonight, the board has on the, uh, agenda for approval, the variance for school district 168 for the signs at Wagner School. This is for their blossoms program, um, that started. Um, the zoning board of appeals recommended approval of this variance, and I'm also making that recommendation as well. Um, with that, I would ask that, as the village has done in the past, to waive the permit fees, um, if there's no one that objects to that, um, for the sign, uh, permit for District 168. Um, in the past, the village has waived all permit fees for the school districts as well as the library. So if anyone does not object to that, I would go ahead and waive that. And that concludes my report.
Okay, our reports of trustees, standing committees, and comments, Public Service Committee Trustee Bernice Brewer.
I have, uh, no report for the, uh, Public Service Committee. However, um, I do have a comment. Um, the, um... According to, um, what we've just heard from the mayor, that most of the things here that the trustees are aware of, we don't know half the thing that, uh, that's going on in the village. Nobody tells us anything. When we ask, we give a bunch of runaround about, we can't get, uh, uh, reports, or you have to come to your office and get the report, and it never gets the report. You know, we need to do better, and we need to be more respectful of each other. There's a thing called transparency that we need in order to do our work, and which we're not getting, okay? We need to be able to communicate to what's going on here in the village. And when we ask about stuff that's happened before, like this plexiglass, somebody should be able to tell us what's the status of what's going on. A lot of things are going on, and they don't tell us anything. Trustees don't know anything. So we might wanna, uh, do that, uh, address that issue a little better. Now, also, I'd like to, um, address the issue of the interim director, as you say. Uh, this position seemed to be just posted, and you're saying that it shouldn't have been brought before the board? Um, I, I have questions about that. And I've also sent, uh, a memo to, uh, Olson and Sturks, because a lot of things are going on that we're not privy to, or that we don't have questions for. We have questions, but nobody wants to give us an actual answer about what's going on. So that's what I think the, uh, attorney is supposed to be for, to clarify some of these things. Because we ask questions, we just don't get any answers. So, uh, with that being said, I'd like to, um, address the issue on, uh, the, um, how much was paid for the, um, interim director? Who set the salary and who approved it? Even though you say it's not done, how long is that gonna go on? She could be working for us for the next five, 10, 15 years. We never know. But we need an answer on how, when this stuff is gonna be, uh, addressed. Uh, doing the thing, and also, um, we were never told that the finance director was fired. For some reason, we, we knew. Everybody knows, I mean, from gossip. So it seems to me that if we wanna be open and transparent, we need to know what's going on here in the village. That's the end of my report.
Does that one question, who agree?
Well, I.
Okay.
Okay, and you should know too, resident.
I just asked you a question.
Okay, well, I'm answering. I'm answering your question. Uh, we don't need to go back and forth. We trying to be respectful?
I just asked you a question.
Okay, I, I clarified my question. I...
Budget and Finance Committee Trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the Budget and Finance Committee did not meet in August, but we plan to meet in September, and we hope to get Gerald out, so he can kinda go over, give us input and recommendations on the cybersecurity policy, which I would like to bring before the board, uh, pretty soon. Uh, in regards to, I believe that, uh, Ms. Hopkins asked a question about the, during repairs, a part of the $800,000 from the cash reserve. And I believe that last week, during our discussion on the cash reserve, that, uh, I think you direct, you asked the finance, I mean, sorry, the department heads to give you like a list, uh, thing to come up with, and then we will kinda look over it as a board to discuss what can and could not be done with the balance that we have left, uh, of the 1.3 million dollars. So it's something that we are looking into, and just wanted to kinda make that point. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee.
I have a question.
On his report?
Uh, yeah, he had, I just want him to say something. I couldn't hear you on the end. You said you was, you had a list. I couldn't hear you. Can you speak up?
No, so, so last week, during the cash reserve discussion that we had, the mayor said that he asked the department heads to give him a list of repairs that they needed. And we will take that as a board into discussion and see what we can do with the balance of the 1.3 million dollars, what we can, what we can get done and could not get done.
Oh, okay.
Housing and Government Relations Trustee Seif Tefaz. Ordnance Review Committee Trustee Lipit Ha.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordnance Review Committee will meet tentatively right now on September 10th, 6:30 PM. Um, I have several ordinances I'm going to be bringing before the board. I'm waiting for the attorneys to send them back, and I wanna proof them to make sure they are correct. And that ends my report.
Public Safety Committee Trustee Bestinah.
Our next committee meeting will be next Wednesday at 6:00 PM here in the Rotunda. Hope to see everybody here then. And then, uh, so that ends my committee report. I do have a question, Mayor. Our official agenda, or I should say outline of meetings for the year indicates that we do not have a committee meeting next week. So I just wanna double-check that that is the case, that we're gonna stick to that calendar and not have a committee meeting next week.
Unless there's something special, we will adhere to the calendar. Unless there's, there's a need for a special meeting, we will not adhere. I'm sorry, we will adhere to the, um, the calendar, which means we will not have a meeting next Tuesday.
It was part of the calendar that was up at the beginning of the year.
Um, Community Outreach Trustee Ronald Carter, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have a report for this question.
Reports of committees and commissions. Mr. Emmett Farmer, Chairman of the South Village Advisory, Senior Advisory Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees. Our next meeting for the Senior Advisory Council, September 13th, and all are welcome. Uh, we have finalized our second trip, uh, for the seniors to the Four Winds Casino Friday, September 28th. And that's gonna be from 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM. The cost is $35. With a $25 credit toward food and gaming. Please encourage the seniors to come out. We do have some flyers made, made up, and we, I did put some back on the table for anyone that wants them. Also, we have a health fair coming for the seniors on, uh, September 27th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Also, the seniors are walking every morning, Monday through Friday, in the park behind the village. Please meet us there at 7:00 AM, and we'll be walking for one hour. Uh, also in September, we got Lion Dancing with Miss Tina coming every Tuesday, except for September 18th. And, um, the charge for the cost is $3 for each senior. And, uh, September 18th, we do have comp yet during the informational seminar of our free home assessments on how to save money on your electric bill, and that will start at 10:00 AM. Also, our first game night for the one in September is Friday, September 7th, and our next one is the 21st. Please come out, invite the seniors for bit twists and other games. And then I have one that's not on your report, uh, you all can add it with the seniors. And also we'll be hosting, uh, Medicare sales meetings during the open season this year, October 15th through December 7th. And more info to come on the days and the times. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, on September 13th, Mr. Farmer, that's your next meeting. What time is it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, 5:00 o'clock.
Thank you. Thank you so much. New business? Uh, I entertain a motion to approve accounts payable dated 8/28/2018 with $319,152.79. I entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, present a motion to remove the salary for the interim director, because we're, we don't know how much we're, she's supposed to be paying. Uh, there's no, uh, indication of how much she's supposed to be paid during the, uh, pay period. And, uh, we're just not sure, uh, how much she's supposed to get paid. So I'd like to make a motion to remove her salary till it's determined to find out how much is she supposed to get paid. And, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, I just have a question in general. Do we ask for, uh, two motions, or do we just do one? Because I have two different subjects.
You ask, you ask to have a motion put on, on the, uh, record. I told you what the, the job paid, but, okay, you have a motion?
You told us what the job would pay, did you say?
I told you that she would be getting the payment of what Mohan is getting until...
How much is that?
Until the board. You don't know Mohan's salary?
No, I don't know Mohan's salary. Remember, we did, we never could get a, a copy of the salary.
Okay, well, that's it.
It's public information.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second for not paying the interim, um, director her salary until such time that you, whatever. I don't know if you wanna find out. But there's a motion on the floor in a second. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
No.
Trustee Grant?
No.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
No.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion lost?
Delete the, uh, salary for Dr. Strater, uh, for this pay period. According to this, uh, accounts for payroll, she has a total of $4,900 something dollars from, uh, this particular pay period. Last pay period, she, uh, she earned $6,999.75. I think we need to talk about this. Something's a little ridiculous about this. We ask every week how much the, uh, uh, Dr. Strater's being paid, and it's never revealed how much she's being paid. It's a little ridiculous that she could sit here every two weeks on a part-time salary and get almost $7,000, and then the next week she gets another five. Uh, Trustee Zupan asked about this. Trustee, uh, Todd asked about this. But yet, nobody's ever asking about, you know, why is she getting all this money there? And, and quite as well, Kelly, somebody's being paid too much money for this, you know? We don't, there's no place in South Village where somebody should be making that kind of money.
Nowhere.
So I'm, I just asked for a motion. It's, it's a little ridiculous to me. If she could give us an explanation of a part-time employee...
Just need a second.
Okay, okay. Excuse me, I'm, I'm on the floor. Don't interrupt me.
You cannot discuss until you have a second to the motion.
It's my floor.
No, it's not. We're not going to...
There's a motion, trustee.
On the floor. So you need a second.
Trustee, you made a motion. You made a motion.
Okay, okay.
I'm looking for a second. You made a motion. Are there any, is there a second?
I'll second it.
It was moved by Trustee Brewer's second, by Trustee Todd, that the, I guess you would call it, that Dr. Slaughter's, um, invoices would not be paid.
No, I said the, the salary. I didn't say her invoices. I just said the salary.
She gets, he has invoice. She's a, um, she's a, um, consultant. She has a salary. We, are you, are you really gonna do that? Are you really gonna do that? Madam Clerk, please.
Here's the, here's the question, because we have a second, and I want it removed.
Here's the question, because we have a second, and I want it removed. The reason I do is because last week, or two weeks ago, we'll say, what we're looking at is, we voted on 17 hours per week. That's what this board voted on, and she's taking 17.45. Now, I gave you the information, and I think it needs to be looked at. That's why I want to see it removed, until this gets looked into. Because nowhere when we voted on it did it say 17.545 and $6,000. Now, that's the information that Dr. Stroud gave you in her statement of work, but that's not what we voted on. And so I did give you the information, and that's why I'd like to see it removed.
Any other questions? Any other questions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Grant?
No.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
No.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
No. Motion failed. All right, looking for a call the roll on the amount that I, looking for a motion for the amount of $319,152.79 for accounts payable dated 8/28/2018.
So.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Zupan, any questions?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I, I got confused. What did you just say? You wanted to do what with the $316,000?
I said, no, I didn't say that. I said $319,152.79.
So we're going to give her more money? Is that, is that what it's for?
Do you pick up your packet today, or, I mean, this was, this was revised? This was revised from different years, um, package?
It might have been in my packets, but I.
Okay, well, that's the amount that, that's, that's on there.
Right.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number B, motion to approve the cash reserve policy. I'll entertain a motion.
So.
It was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Zupan, any questions?
I just have a comment on this. A cash reserve would be wonderful if we had a lot of money, but we don't. And one of the things that was brought up last week is, I'd like to see what our department heads need before we go into a cash reserve, because there's a lot of things that are needed out here. We could use more police officers. We have public workers astound a person. There's a lot of things that is needed and has been needed. I'd love to see a cash reserve, but I believe that we need to put the needs of this village first, and then whatever is left, start a cash reserve. But until we have a lot of money, it's just my personal opinion. I'd like to see what the department has, has for needs, not wants.
As I stated last week, trustee Todd, I did talk to the department heads, and they will be submitting a list of things that they need, and we will be discussing, as I said, to the board. I will be bringing it back once I get that list to the board to let them know what it is that they're looking for.
But in the meantime, you want to pass a policy with $808,000 in reserves. I'd like to see the list. I realize what you said last week, but I'd first like to see it before you take $808,000 of this 1.3 million and stick it in reserve. That's my personal opinion.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, with this particular issue, I mean, we could just list the whole gamut of things that we need. I hope that trustee, this is a very good policy for trustee Grant. However, we, we need things like the mandatory manhole repair project, which costs $191,000, $391,000 in repairs for water main breaks and stuff like that. So, you know, as you go through and you say you want, we want to spend $808,000 for.
Not spend.
Uh, in reserve, for stuff that's needed, why not need them? We could fix that stuff as we go along, and it would be beneficial to all of us. Why are we holding on to stuff when we know we need stuff to be fixed? It's, it's crazy.
So I know this is not the time for back and forth discussion. Can I do?
No, no.
Wait, 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 wait. First of all, there's a motion on the floor, so there's not a time for back and forth. So I will say that if we do spend money, the $800,000, what happens when we have no money and we have to borrow again from the waterfront? How do we ever get out of that hole? That's all that I'm bringing to the board. We need some kind of reserve in place so that we are not in the same situation we were in the past. We just borrowed $550,000 from the bond from last, well, from this past spring, and how do we ever plan to get out of the hole without borrowing money, without lines of credit? We have to start somewhere.
Well, the way we would get out of the hole is to pay stuff as we go along. You just can't spend every dime you get. You, you, you think about, you got expense that's on the books right now for $191,000 for a manhole, that's mandatory. Why would I put that in reserve when I know that's mandatory? That's something we have to do. So my, my thing is to that, my thing is to this. And also, in addition to that, we have $250,000. We still don't know where that waterfront money went. So I'm just saying, all this money is walking up out of here, and you want to sit and hold some money? When we have things that need to be fixed? It's, it's a little, it's a little crazy.
And trustee, the list from the department heads, they will entail all of their needs, and we will, as a board, vote on that, on what we decide to fix and not fix with the remaining money. It's not like we're not fixing anything at all. We can't fix everything, but we will fix some things.
Okay, wait, 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 I mean, you guys are here all the time, like I stated before, that before any money is spent, it's going to be voted on. But it's amazing how now, because there was some people that were, did not like that land to be sold. There was a lot of controversy on selling that land, a lot of controversy on bringing that business in. Now that it's here, and it's going to be a fruit for the village, to help the village, now everybody wants to know what's the money. The money's going to be spent with the direction of the village. The money is not going into some false fund or somebody's whatever account. The money's going to be there. We just allocated it so, you know, it can be used in case. As anyone knows that's been here for a while, we always run through a part of the year where we don't get any money in, we have to borrow from somewhere. This is, hopefully, will stop some of that. But we're going back and forth on this, there's a motion on the floor. Everybody had a chance to speak on it, I'll, I'll ask for a vote.
I have a comment first. I, does somebody understand, wait a minute, that we're supposed to have a floor and have discussion? Now, maybe Marva could chime in on that, on when we're supposed to, I thought we're supposed to talk on stuff twice, at least twice, but you said that.
What else do you have to say, trustee?
I'm asking Marva for your, you know, your guidance on this matter.
I asked you, what else do you have to say, trustee?
I'm asking Marva for guidance on the matter.
On what matter?
That it need to be discussed again.
If you have, so I asked you what else do you have to discuss?
Marva, can you give me a guidance on?
Marva?
Yeah. Village clerk, Marva.
I don't understand that. I said, if you have another question, ask your question.
Village clerk, Marva, can you give us some, some guidance on? The, the. Reserve. I'm sorry, you're very right, you're right, village clerk. On the policy, policy on whether or not we could talk, because the mayor has cut us off two or three times. So I would like for you to please give us some guidance on whether or not we, you know, how long to talk or whatever.
You got the floor, trustee, you have the floor.
So can you elaborate on that?
If you have another question, please ask your question.
That's my question.
You have a question?
I got it.
Please ask your question. Why do you ask him?
I'm asking.
You have another question, ask your question. What do you need, what do you, what do you need? Ask your question.
I have to be recognized by the mayor before I can speak. That's protocol. I'm following protocol.
Some people don't feel that way. Do you have?
Trustee already, please give him another opportunity to talk. Please talk.
The comment I want.
People are sitting here, hopefully, we're trying to conduct some business. This is not a, this is not a, a show. This is not a show for somebody to have, to sit down. We're trying to conduct business, I'm asking you.
That's not right, man, that's not right what you're doing there, that's not right.
I will ask you one more time, please.
Because nobody else.
You, I'm asking.
So thank you to trustee Brewer.
We have one more, we have one more question, ask your question, ma'am.
Okay, my question is, I'm asking the village clerk, village clerk, Marva, on policy procedures on asking a question I would like to ask again. How many times do we get to talk on a particular subject? Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor, may I answer her question?
The question's already been answered. I asked her, she, she wants to talk again, she can talk again. I said that eight times. So what this does is, she can talk again, if you have something else to say, trustee, please. People are here waiting, you know, this is, you're playing with people now. Please ask the question.
Trustee, village, uh, village clerk, I, the clerk, and I'm talking to the.
Then, then ask your question.
Village clerk, I asked the question, so can I get answered? And the mayor keeps interrupting the question, so.
That's it, you have anything else? You have anything else?
I can't, I can't, I can't release it unless the village clerk answers the question.
Trustee.
You inter, open meetings.
I'm interrupting you, I'm asking you a question. I've said this for the last two minutes, you have anything else to say?
Point of order.
Who, point of who?
Point of order, Mr. Trustee, village clerk.
Look at the man, the man.
The mayor is, I have the floor, he has not addressed my question. So I think he's in violation of open meetings there. All I want to answer is a question, I'd like directions on what we should be doing. I don't think there's no more to write.
If you don't have another question, I'd like to move on.
I haven't got an answer.
You did get the answer, if you have no other question, I'd like to move on. Thank you. I'll accept, I'll, um, accept the motion for item number B.
The motion was not answered.
Would you please call, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Motion is carried. Item number C, motion to accept the South Village zoning board's recommendation for the variance of the sign ordinance to accommodate the Blossom program signage. I'll attend.
Second.
Moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee, um, Grant. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, a quick question. The last motion that was passed, was it passed with the removal of the permit fee, uh, the sign fees for the?
Okay, um, did you want to?
Do we have to?
Okay, yes, you do.
Can we do that?
Um, okay, you amend the, the motion?
I amend my motion to waive the permit fee.
Permit fee and the, yeah, sign fee and permit fee. And you waive, and you waive for the second?
I waive for the second.
Okay, so the motion is, I'm sorry, the original motion and the other motion that's been put in place is for the waiving of the permit fees and sign fees. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
So the motion is seconded.
No, he, they, they, they amended that, right? So they want to put in that the sign fees and permits need to be waived.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
And trustee Carter?
Yes. Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, I need a second. Okay. It was moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Grant, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.